...dealing on the bottom, just touch the bottom there, it'll turn green.
Thank you for joining us to our December workshop, December 7th, 2017. We're a little shorthanded tonight, see a lot of empty chairs. Our clerk treasurer is under the weather, so I'll be recording the meeting and it will be uploaded as soon as she's back into the office. It'll be online and she will transcribe minutes from that. And we have two council members that are unavailable tonight, out of town. So we have three council members and we have our city planner and our fire chief. So we'll have the workshop, generally, we don't have floor items during the workshop. There are some things that people may want to talk about, so we have a little more leeway at a workshop to discuss details. Our votes are on Tuesday night, so we'll have a meeting next Tuesday. And at that meeting is when we'll vote on the items that are here tonight. So this is information gathering and we'll try and be a little more thorough because we expect the other council members to watch this online, so we're going to give them as much detail as we can. And so we will be a little more tolerant of discussion tonight than we typically are, so. So, anything, being with short staffed, anything that council members want to do unusual tonight or just get through it? All right. We'll start with item number one there, request from the chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, before we approve the agenda, I was wondering if we could motion to table or to table item two down under Park and Recreation as there was no meeting on Tuesday.
All right. So, any other amendments to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, I'll have motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
And second, and second it. On the favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Start with the RCA then from the fire chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in our last gathering here, back in August, we discussed the need for a fire rescue truck for the fire department. Since that time, since August, we've been looking diligently for a piece of equipment for the $50,000 dollar amount that was granted. We've struggled to find a decent piece of equipment that's going to fit in with our needs and also also use the best, the best use for the money based on mechanical and physical condition. So what I'm asking is currently, right now, we are, our near-to-date budget, we are under by $21,719. Asking to move that forward into our fire equipment fund. Way we can increase and broaden our search. We've looked at a few vehicles, we've actually had our city mechanic, Joe, take a look at one as well. He, his opinion, it wasn't a good deal for us. We're, are dealing with a broker as well, he's out across country looking for it. I've also reached out to our Metro Chiefs Association, Anoka County Fire Protection Council, got the word out there as well. Really looking at, hopefully trying to find and trying to deal with a fire department that is selling it directly. I feel that we have some of the trucks that are out there right now and that we're having doubts with. They're falling in that dollar, original $50,000 range, are trucks that are used for a different industry and then they're throwing a fire department box on there, so I'm not sure if that's really a good fit, if the suspension is correct, if the lighting is all where it needs to be. So hopefully by taking this year-end that we're under budget, this dollar amount, we can open up a bigger target area.
Right. Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
One question I have for the chief, as we've discussed in the past, we've allocated $7,500 per year for turnout gear. So that $21,000 currently includes, includes that $7,500 for the turnout gear?
Correct.
So you still want that $7,500 to go for the turnout gear or for the, because we kind of set up, we're setting aside the turnout gear separate?
We're rolling over the turnout gears, what we were, we talked about previously.
And I talked, I spoke with our city clerk Cory about that. That was my question to Cory as well and what, from her memory, she had thought that every year that was going to be a reoccurring request from the fire department to, to put that $7,500 out there and that if it, if it doesn't get used, it'll go into our fire equipment fund because we did not have a separate fund for the, for the turnout gear. Because we had, I know we had discussed that, or I thought that we had the fire equipment fund and we were also going to do a separate
Right, yeah.
turnout gear fund, but she did not remember it that way.
My recollection was that we were going to set aside a category for the protection equipment.
And that's, that's how I remembered it as well, but.
So that we could build a pool because we knew we were going to come up with some replacements that would exceed our, our annual allotment. So I, I think I'd still like to keep that portion of it, you know, go back to $14,000 and roll over that, which would still open the budget. I believe we have $90,000 in that.
Correct.
But I, I just don't want to shortchange this on the turnout gear either. Maybe there's some middle ground that we can.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that and that's, as I, as I mentioned, I spoke with Cory today about that, thinking that that's, that was the route we were going to go. Ended up being, you know, $14,000 and some change here and she just said that it's all, it's going to go all into the fire equipment fund.
Yeah, my preference would be to, to do what we had talked about in budget meetings, is set up a category so we could pool that to use for the years you need it, we'd have the, the extra that's necessary. Because we, we're anticipating some larger turnout requirements in the coming years.
Correct. In nineteen, we, we, I don't have the correct number, but I know the year of 2019, we had a number of our turnout gears that needed to be replaced. And the current $7,500 that's, that's in there would not come here to be able to.
So if you're comfortable with, with that, Councilman Bettinger, you have any? So if you're comfortable with that, I'd prefer the 14 and change to go into the equipment fund and the $7,500 that wasn't used go into a dedicated fund for turnout gear, so that we can be prepared for 2019. If you're okay with that?
Yep, I think that's a, that's a good middle ground. I think we need to get that line item in there or another category in there to, to separate the two then, so it's distinctive.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bettinger, Brian.
Question for the chief, so, so is this RCA want, almost looking, we're looking for possibly two different things? One, to do the year-end transfer and another one to increase the range for the purchase price?
Well, this, this is just based, just for the transfer and then I'll, I will do another one for the increase in the purchase price. And I think what I, if everybody's comfortable with that, it would be more of a range than a specific dollar amount.
Would you like to do them both at the same time and you've certainly put it in your background?
I would be fine with that.
So if, if we can just have it amended on the request to transfer the remaining balance, we'll specify the $14,000. We will, we will have to clarify with Cory what we intended on the $7,500 going into the turnout fund, dedicating a fund for that. And then we can amend the request to, to widen the, the range for your search. If you want to resubmit that. So the source of funding, $14,000 plus to, to the equipment fund and then we should mention in there, just so we don't miss it, the $7,500 to the turnout gear fund. And we'll get that fund established. Cory is hoping to be in the office tomorrow, or Monday, she can get that to, that amended to us. Councilman Brian.
Just, not to be a stickler, but is there anything else that we need to just leave, instead of specifying a specific amount? Is there anything that we're specifically going to need for the next three weeks? Budget wa, budget-wise?
No, everything is in, so Cory did the finals.
I did ask Cory, she said she's not expecting that anymore, but those two.
That should be the final amount there, 21, 719, 71.
Put, put the approximate sign there then, just in case.
For off by a little bit.
All right, anything else on that? And Mr. Dennis Lustigal requests a fire call. Would you like to, we have your letter here, would you like to say anything in addition?
No, I thought my letter probably summed it up pretty well, if you must.
All right.
The, the things I could think of.
Both the captain secretary and the chief were both on scene at some point there and I have seen your letter, both of you seen the letter? I guess I would, I would ask the chief to address specifically and then after he speaks, I would give you an opportunity to, to weigh in addition to your letter.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did get a chance to read the letter and from, from Mr. Lustigal's perspective, I can understand and appreciate his, his thoughts here. A little background on, on the fire permits and how they work. We've, the city gives out hundreds of permit, permits throughout the course of the year. Very rarely do we respond to any, if we do, it's maybe a, it'll be a duty officer page out with a possible smoke in the area. This particular call, I, I looked at the, the calls data today, two 911 calls came in before Mr. Lustigal's call as well. First one came in, looked like a grass fire, is what the caller said. The second caller ca, that said it was a five to 10 acre grass fire. And so based on that information, dispatch tones out an all call. So whether there's a, an active permit or not, we can't just disregard that, thinking that it is the permit. Because that, that would be the worst case if, if the neighbor, you know, we know there's a burn permit somewhere in that area, but if the neighbor's house is go, is on fire or there's a, again, a 10 acre grass fire, we, we certainly want to be able to respond. Once, once we were there, if, if it, if it deems that it was just a small little permit burn, then everybody's canceled, everybody goes back home. But this, from the road appeared like it was more than just the grass or a permit burn. We got out on scene there, there was 10 to 12 piles that were actively burning, which is a violation of the, of the burn, permit burn, can only have up to three piles burning at one time. So that was the issue there. We used the grass trucks to extinguish the, the existing fires that were going and then cleared. I believe fire marshal did take the permit from Mr. Lustigal and to discuss that with Cory.
And then the total cost, do you have that?
Looks like. $988 maybe, it's a little blurry here. So that's the cost of the firefighters and the, the trucks as well.
So the 34, 34 fighter, firefighters in two hours? Lustigal, would you like to add anything? If you could, would you come up to the podium so we can get it on tape? Liz, could you make sure that's on?
Yeah, I guess what I would add is that I knew, like I stated in my letter, that if I would have been told at the time I had too many fires, I could have counted them. And I only had four rows burning, so 10 to 12 is absolutely impossible. And if they were counting, why didn't they know an exact number? And I don't know what I can add to that other than, I mean, I could still go show you that the five rows, there's only five rows that were burning.
Were they burning along the, the length of the rows? I mean, our, our limits are 15 feet.
Yeah, they were only burning the width of the windrow, probably that far into the windrow. And they're just moving slowly along their way. I mean, it was so damp out there that, you know, if you're walking in tennis shoes, you would have got wet tennis shoes. There's so much dew on the grass. There's virtually no way them fires could have got away because they were in short stubble from the mower. At, at the most, it could have been five, because there's only five rows burning. Now, there might have been some soot that was still red 50 feet behind where they were burning. You know, if they want to count that as a fire, they, I guess they might, but but active flames, I would say five would have been the max. And then they're only, you know, my mower's a small mower, so they're only at the max 10 feet apart, so.
Council, have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I don't know how a 911 caller could see there was a 10 acre fire. Because if the most would have been five rows, not even as wide as this building here.
But it probably looked like less from your perspective. It probably looked like less from your perspective because you knew what you were, what you were doing.
Yeah, and the fire was a half a mile from the road, a half a mile from the nearest house.
But, but being night and.
Oh, it was really dark, there was no moon or, yeah, it probably looked bright from the road.
I, I was there, it looked like a structure fire.
You were there?
I, well, I happened to be driving by.
Oh, okay.
And as mayor, I'm looking at all these fire trucks, going, what in the world's going on? So I was at the corner of now then and 24.
Oh, okay.
And I stopped and asked the firefighters if there was a structure fire out there and they said, no, it's grass.
Yeah.
So it did, it looked a lot bigger from the road.
Yeah, you, you know.
If you don't know your property, you don't know that there's no building back there, so.
No. I, you know, I'm not faulting the 911 caller, you know, they're over-exaggerating by a lot. You know, it was five windrows. I had 50 windrows I could have been burning, I was only burning five, I can still show you that. You know, and I'd probably burnt, I had probably gone 50 feet since I started them. And there could have been some red ashes behind me, but there's only five windrows burning.
And did, did you get the permit yourself?
I got the permit myself, yeah.
Because typically the office would let people know if they're burning multiple piles, three is the limit.
They, I've always been told that the max is 15 feet and that 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM is a times.
Yeah, it's 15 feet, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM and, and three piles max at, at a time.
That I've never been told. Like I said, I looked in your website, maybe it's in somewhere on the rules, but I didn't know where to look to find it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
If I may ask, Mr. Lustigal, did you get one of these sheets?
When I got the permit?
When you got the permit?
No, I just got the little six by six inch permit that I signed.
Okay, did you notice on the permit, it specis, it, it specifically talks about the Minnesota statute and what you can and can't do?
No. The lady at the office is always friendly and she just said, you know, just warning you, you got to have a fire no more than 15 feet and you can only burn at night, so.
And so you had, if I, if I heard you correctly, you were saying you had probably five piles going at once?
Five windrows.
Five windrows, okay.
Yeah, they're only.
In essence, a pile.
Yeah, I saw this.
So you would call it a pile and you were saying they were like 50 feet long?
No, I said I'd burnt 50 feet so far.
Okay, how long were the piles?
Well, they're windrows around hay field.
Right, right. So approximately, how long were your windrows?
They could have been 300, 400 yards.
So more than 15 feet.
If you want to call them that, yeah. It just looks to me like somebody's trying to read the law real fine, so I can get a penalty, is the way it looks to me. Because I had a permit, the conditions were perfect for burning, actually they're poor for burning because it wouldn't burn very well. And you know, it's, there was 34 guys, they can count 10 to 12 fires when I know there's only five windrows burning. And if I had any idea that you could only have five, I could have easily had them out before anybody even got out there. You know, they're burning, so.
The, well, part of it is, you know, we're not just looking to necessarily issue a fine. We want to do better at what we're doing too. And we do have a, an open burning regulation sheet, which if we're not handing it out every time there's a permit, we should. It should be, when you sign the permit, you should get the sheet because it does say.
That I did not get.
Item, point number two does say 15 by 15, put the maximum on the pile size and a maximum of three piles at any one time. So that will be.
Like I said in my.
Certainly for all of us to learn, if, if we're not doing that when we hand out permits, this should be mandatory to make sure it's out there.
Right.
Then whether they explained this all to you or not, you, you take the obligations when you sign the permit to, to follow the regulations, so.
You know, if I had three 15 foot brush piles ready to burn and come 6 o'clock, I'd went and lit each one, but I started one in each end, you know, to help them get burning faster, would I for a short time have six fires burning or would I have three fires burning?
If you had three 15 foot by 15 foot piles.
Right, and you started one in each end, a fire to, you know, burn them. Until them two fires met in the middle, would you have six fires going or three fires?
You'd have one pile burning in two places, but you'd have, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not a, I'm not as upset about the fine as the fact that, you know, not the amount of the fine, it's just the fact that if, like I said in my letter, it's pretty hard to have just a 15 foot fire if you're burning a lot of brush. And if they're going to be really nitpicky, that's going to be next to impossible to ever have a fire.
Well, you know, and, and again, I'm, I'm not certain off the top of my head here. You have a unique situation where you're in a hay field with cut stubble and what you perceive to be optimal conditions. Most people don't have that, most people do have brush that they've collected around their property, stick it in a pile and, and, you know, for a long time, I think it was 10 by 10, 15 by 15 is a pretty big pile. Wind conditions have to be right, moisture conditions, you have to have it monitored and managed and. But I would think in a case like that, if you, if you run into this again, we could probably arrange something with the fire department so that we could be proactive on it. You can get what needs to be done so you can maintain your hay fields, but we would work something out with the fire department and say, here's the regulations, here's the guidelines and here's how we can avoid this type of situation again. So I think a takeaway for us is make sure anytime you're giving a burning permit, make sure these are right next to the booklet when you do the burning permit and hand out the regulations. And if we have something unusual like that, work with the city and the fire department to say, what can we do? Is there a reasonable way of either raking the windrows a little differently or monitoring that in a way that we've specifically notified the fire department? Because as the chief said, they can't risk the fact that it was a permit that got out of hand. It's a permit that, that's there, but looks unusual or it happens to be a house burning next to a place who has a permit. They don't have that option, when you're out here, you get to scramble the trucks and.
Couldn't they call me? They had no clue I had a permit when they got out there.
And it's, it's typical, I, I will say, from personal experience, the grass rig or the duty officer shows up and they look for a permit, they look for control first. And then they typically call back and say, no need or, you know, we need to, we need to come until we know we have control. But typically they, I, I don't know that they've ever called ahead of time. We get a call of smoke in the area, I know they generally send the duty officer and the duty officer's job is to communicate quickly the situation. My experience is accurate?
Yes.
So I don't know that they would have called, I don't know if your cell number was on the permit.
It was.
But in, in the case where you've got to scramble 34 people, when it's an all call, we have three stations responding immediately. I don't know that they would have time to try and get ahold of you in, in that case and say, is that you or is that something else out there? If, if we're going to air, the fire department, we always air, get them there first and back down rather than debate. We, we've had some fires in, in the area recently in Oak Grove and in Ramsey that by the time the fire, fires could get there, with wind conditions being what they were, the houses were lost. We don't have a lot of time to scramble out here because if we are scrambling, you volunteer firefighters. So we do tend to air on the side of get there first and then.
Well, if you're going to air on the side of caution, I can understand that, but then why penalize me for that? You know?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bettinger.
Maybe in the future, if you're going to burn something that's outside of that 15 foot pile or whatever, I think typically if you call the fire department and let them know.
Yeah, this is.
Work with them on it, you know, so then they're aware of it and they'll also let you know that, yeah, that, you know, you can do that or you can't do it or this is what you need to do, so.
Yeah, you know, hindsight's.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll add to, to Councilmember Bettinger's comment there. Typically, a burn permit is typically a brush pile. So when we say 15 feet, it's just a 15 foot diameter pile of brush. You had a, a running fire, which is not typically, should not have been approved as a permit. You have several piles, they're not really piles, they're running. So again, can certainly appreciate trying to help you out there in your field and, and we would do what we could to assist with that, but that's, that's not what the permit was originally written for or not what it is for. But again, if you communicate that to us, there's obviously some, you know, flexibility.
No, I know, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
If I may ask a question to, for the chief, what is the difference between a piled permit, piled material on the permit and the running fire on the permit?
Well, a running fire i- is, that's not something that we, that's not part of our permit process. We, what we allow is a, is a, is a pile or a brush pile. The running fire and the reason that we don't approve that as a permit is, is that takes more manpower than typically one, you know, and a, a permit bur, or a, a running fire, you'll need more than just yourself out there. You know, and typically there's companies that come out and, and do that for you.
Yeah, I guess if I was trying to burn like a, a field of standing grass, you know, when it was dry, like in the spring or right now before the snow, yeah, I wouldn't even have attempted to do something like this. And I'd, I had the burn permit, I had burned two nights before on the permit with my son and it was drier that night, but we didn't have much time, we just tried it to see if it would work and. and it was drier that night, but we didn't have much time, we just tried it to see if it would work and um.
It just sounds like there was, uh, you know, there's some miscommunication maybe when the permit was applied for, not knowing exactly what.
Yeah.
Maybe what what you were planning on doing, um, you know, like I said, the city writes out hundreds of permits and they're always piles, and that's what they deal with. And and maybe there was an assumption made, or maybe the right questions weren't asked, or or whatever, but in this particular instance, it 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 wasn't a a pile, it was a running fire.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I'm a fairly safety conscious person and I wouldn't have been out there by myself if there would have been any risk of, I mean, it was dead calm, super damp. I couldn't hardly get the weeds to grow, much less get out of control, I mean, burn.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's put it through the council for a decision on Tuesday.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, item number three, a permit for change in the gambling at Bootleggers to uh, over to the Elk River Youth Hockey. I have a request for council action, Desiree is is in attendance tonight. Thank you, gentlemen. And you'll take care of that modification then?
Yeah, I'll follow Cory tomorrow.
Thank you. So you have the request and you have the support from Mr. Benson, the general manager of Bootleggers, to transfer to somebody closer to home that have people in our community. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
How soon does this start? Does this start January first or now?
No, it would, with approval of you guys, then we would get it over to the state. The state has approved it, but they also have to give the organization heads in there a six-day notice. So, um, February or March, it looks like.
Okay, so this is one of the first steps still?
This is the first step, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Very straightforward. All right. Thank you, we'll vote on Tuesday. The purchase agreement. John Curtis in the house? Come to the podium, please.
Evening, my name is John Curtis, northern resident. Current business owner, also two properties here in the industrial park. I'm looking to acquire a third.
Where where's your second property?
Uh, I own the one in the corner.
Which you bought from the city?
Bought bought from the city, two years back, and then I wanted to be next to the storage locker that Green building there, I sold that. And I'm hoping to acquire a third, seventy-five thousand. For lots, lot one, lot two, the only remaining one in the industrial park. I'm asking seventy-five thousand and and I'd like to have the city split the closing costs. It does need some work, some fill. I'm aware of that, and I think the seventy-five thousand is a fair offer, and split the closing costs, which is what we hit on the previous property I purchased.
That was our pre-asking price for seven, seventy-eight four previously?
That's what the market value the county has on it, or assessed value.
Questions for Mr. Curtis from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
So, Mr. Curtis, based on the information that was given to us, that that's a change for your you you're willing to split the closing costs now?
Split the closing costs.
Okay, so right now, it's it's.
I'm offering seventy-five, and the city and myself would split the closing costs.
Okay, so that's different than what we have?
Yes, yes.
Well, actually, it's it's different twice, because in the vacant land purchase agreement, it says buyers shall pay all closing costs. And on handwritten note in the back, the request was for the city to pay.
Cory earlier tonight, and somehow it was a miscommunication on that. My.
Yeah, I brought that up to Cory the other day, so.
We'll split the closing costs like we did in the previous property that I purchased from you. And as you know, there's some work that needs to be done, there's lots of fill that needs to be added to this particular property.
Well, we've heard that, we've heard that said, I'm not exactly sure.
Depends on what you're doing with the property. My, for what I'm gonna do, I will I will need to add some fill. So I will incur some costs to make that property valid for my business reasons.
Mr. Mayor.
Senator Stockman.
That did come from the city engineer too, so he has looked at that. Just generally speaking, he said for sure the building would need to be raised up similar to what they're doing on Iguana for the tiny homes building. And then, you know, you could slope it slope it back down to your parking lot, or if you didn't wanna raise the parking lot up.
Are you, just curious, are you planning on actually building something there or?
Yes, I do. It's adjacent to the one I have across the street, my my, I'll probably look at activating some type of process for building, not not this next coming here, but the following year.
For the for the one?
For both.
For both lots? Anything else?
The county's market value typically is on the low side. And all the rest of the lots we've sold, that's always been our bottom line, was whatever the county has assessed value on that.
I understand that, but I don't think they took in consideration the the issues on on the site, the site plan, the elevation, with the extra fill you need, so I think it's it's reasonable to ask, you know, a few thousand less. I know you've had other offerings here that are much less, with that consideration of all that extra fill, to accommodate your spec on that particular lot. I think it's a fair offer.
Anything else? Typical closing costs in something like this, do you know what that is?
I don't remember, changes from state to city.
Haven't remember what it was on the other lot? Been a while. All right, anything else you'd like to say to us? All right, thank you very much. Planning and zoning, Northern Historical Power Association. Mr. Stockman, do you wanna?
Yes.
Summarize anything here?
Just briefly, the Power Association uh, came to the city to amend their CUP in response to the permits approved five years ago. Uh, it was kind of a trial run, uh, based on the new events that they added. So we had four events originally part of a conditional use permit. And right now, they're changing one of those four, the We Sober Fest will no longer happen, or hasn't been for a few years. And instead, we're replacing that with the Wapiti rendezvous. And then we clarified some things relative to the use of the facility by the members. We eliminated the two adjoining residential parcels, they do not need that for parking any longer. So basically, just cleaning it up and clarifying, um, the planning and zoning talked about, they didn't feel that there was a need for the Power Association to come back every five years. This first, you know, the first five years was kind of a trial period, and there's been no complaints, uh, no problems that we've heard about. So as long as they're meeting all the conditions, the planning commission felt that we could just go forward, as we do with a lot of our uh, special use permits. So the findings were very specific, both for the CUP and the interim use permit. And if you have any questions, we could talk about those specifically.
Yeah, and on page three of the amended version after the planning and zoning.
The CUP?
The IUP, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Says activities authorized under the terms of this IUP are hereby approved from the amended IUP for the subject properties provided each and every condition attached heretofore. An amended IUP will be required only if requested by the city council based on changes in circumstances or issues which may arise or is deemed necessary by the applicant to alter events, operations, or facilities and grounds. I think we had said that if, we don't need them to come back every five years unless something's changed. That's kinda what that says, but it's backwards, so it starts out with a request from council. We wouldn't know if they're proposing changes. We would only say, something seems to be wrong, we're getting a complaint or something like that, so it it's just a little unclear to me that if, starts with if there's any changes, or if the council has to address any complaints, might be clearer, if if they're proposing changes, and and they've been very thorough with documenting everything they've done. They made a great presentation to the P and Z and, you know, very thorough in what they're doing. But just to make it clear, they don't have to come back unless they're proposing changes, then we wanna know about. And or if there's, happen to be complaints, then the council would call them forth to address complaints. So they could have a hearing on it, they could tell us their side of the story.
Right, okay.
So, I I think that's, you say it in that last sentence, which issues may arise or is deemed necessary by the applicant to alter events, operations, or the facilities or grounds. Maybe reverse that, that if you're changing anything, come address the IUP, and the council will address you if we get complaints.
Okay, I can amend that.
And then the line above that, it uh, I think we're dealing with the IUP here, but line five says any violation of the conditions of the amended CUP. Are we addressing that both in this, the CUP and the?
Well, attorney Rupi had tied the two together, so.
Right, so so that line is accurate in five that.
That is accurate, so in other words, if you violate the CUP, that's gonna affect your IUP or vice versa.
Council have anything else? I will say we we're very honored to have the Historic Association threshing show in our community. We we appreciate the partnership, we appreciate the the goodwill and the professional organization. We appreciate the work, Andy, that you did to prepare for these meetings. And the the op, the professionalism you show in in an organization like this. So we we thank you for that, do you have any questions or comments since the P and Z or anything we said here tonight?
No, everything that, everything that we've talked about is pretty much in writing.
So, we we certainly appreciate you being part of our community and and the Northern name being represented this way far and wide, so. So we will make a final decision on Tuesday, hopefully you'll have a full council and should be good. Thank you, appreciate your patience here. Chuck Bistado.
So, when you give your background, if you could address, I was surprised, because this never came up with the P and Z and there's nothing on the application for the interim use permit. But in our agenda here, it says Chuck Bisto and Cory and Haley Sheldon, is this a joint project?
Well, no, because they were still finalizing the sale when he made application, so that he could meet the deadline. So she had to co-sign, so that I could accept it officially. But then the sale, the sale was complete before the public hearing and.
So the public hearing was accurate?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Bisto owned the property?
Yes.
Entirely at that time, or your bank did?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, he closed on it.
All right, so it's closed, so can we, for the for the agenda for Tuesday, can can you work with Cory to get the Cory and Haley Sheldon off there, just so we don't confuse people?
Sure.
Because that would affect whether we could issue an IUP if it was a joint ownership of somebody who didn't live there.
Well, we oftentimes have co-signers, but yeah, just so for the record, he is, he does own it outright, and and I will have Cory do that.
All right, you have in your packet the amended findings and recommendations after the P and Z. Planning and zoning was looking for fencing and landscaping from the residential neighbors to the west. The outdoor storage compliance. And Mr. Bisto, you've seen the amended results after the, recommendations after the.
Fence and some trees.
Fully screening the low boy if if and when you get one and. Council have any questions for the planner or for Mr. Bistado?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryant.
One comment for Mr. Mr. Bistado was, I know that this lot was under question before, but where the actual lot line is. And there was an attempt to to adjust that, but that fell through. You mentioned that you were going to be, you know, taking up, taking out the fencing and doing some possible potential of regrading down the road?
Yeah, I was gonna leave the perimeter fencing off and regrade it all, cause I was shooting elevations, there's negative drainage.
My my one question was, is that gonna be an issue with your neighbor for continuing to be on, having the fencing on their?
I'm just gonna leave the fence, cause technically, if it's on my property, I ain't touching it.
Okay.
So that's the older perimeter, so.
Which would make sense, if they wanna take it down, it's up to them, if you wanna put up something else on the property line, it's up to you.
Okay, so it's clear now, clear where that actual new lot, where the correct lot line is?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Senator Stockman, anything else?
Nope, I think they hashed it out pretty well at P and Z.
All right, Tuesday night, we'll take our vote. Thank you.
Thanks.
Gary Udi. Udi?
Udi.
Yeah, it writes first time. All right, we got a tough one here. The neighbors are. The neighbors are either unable or uncooperative as far as opening up more access to these potential two lots. There was some concern on one of the neighbors as to what activities will actually be going on back there.
Yeah, and I did try to address that. I apologize and thank you for having me here and allowing me to, to at least say my piece of clarification. I didn't, I did, I think there was a lot, and Miss Stockman did a great job of explaining things to the P and Z, but I failed miserably to communicate what was going on. There were a number of things that were, you know, that were stated at that meeting and probably were embellished somewhat. And I think that's what affected, you know, the, the vote, so. I think if, if the, you know, if the council certainly uses facts to make its decision, I certainly would respect that. I certainly do. But I think that after I looked at and heard, you know, the testimony, that was there that particular evening at the P and Z, there were some things that were said. For example, like Mr. Udi runs a business out of there, that is not true, it has never been true. And idling is going to happen in the future, I'd say definitely not. Another statement that was made by my, by my neighbor, was that Gypsy Valley Road is very busy there and it would be really to have another home site there rather than just the one, have two. That that's gonna cause a concern. Gypsy Valley is not very busy. If you sit out there, sometimes you can sit for an hour and you don't see a car even go by. If, in the morning and in the afternoon, there's some folks that, yes, they do live out there, but it is not a busy, it is not a busy, uh, street at all. I've owned the property for nine years and in those nine years, we have had zero complaints from the city, from the neighbors, or the police department. So I felt we've been a very good neighbor, I have, and what I'm looking to do is to subdivide the 20 acre parcel into two tents, so that both of my sons can build a home out there in, in the next year or two. And I think we've, we've been good neighbors. And a couple of things, you know, were, were stated at that meeting that I had not heard, I had no indication of that, uh, in the, in the, in the, you know, future or previous to that. And in fact, I've got my son Dustin here, you know, he's the one, they were talking about a drone that was being flown, and it was being flown. And Pia was concerned and maybe because she raises horses, that that may, it wasn't over her horses, but it was on our property, but it may, uh, may affect the horses negatively. And she had a good question, because she said, if you build two houses on there, Gary, is it going to affect my drainage? And I said, no, I, it's not gonna affect your drainage, because the city isn't gonna allow us to do that. And I would not allow that to happen. But the other neighbor who is to the, I would say to the east of us, that's Michael Anker of Merzendorf. They, they are the ones, and Michael in particular, who's, who made the probably, what I would say, embellished statements that somewhat affected the, uh, the P and Z to make their, I think it was a four to, to vote, but it was in emotion and caring for denial. And I respect that. But I think there was some confusion there, because one of the council members made comment that they didn't think that the, that the site was large enough to support a home. And Miss Stockman clearly stated, did a very good job, that yes, there is enough land there to support that home, two septic sites in the existing egg building that is there. Another comment that was made by one of the P and Z members, as they looked at one of the, uh, one of the drawings here that shows the two septic sites, there's also on that particular, on that particular drawing, which is a survey, there's also a topo on there. And of course, when you take a topo of a site like that and you reduce it down to about this wide, the lines do look very close. So she was concerned, she thought, jeez, it looks like there's an awful lot of elevation change there. I would invite you to come out and take a look, I will certainly meet you out there. There's a gate, it's a gate over the, over the, over the, over the driveway that has a blacktop driveway, really leading out there now. And you can certainly climb over the fence if you want to do it, or you want to walk out there. But the elevations is, it's all, it's just a barely gently rolling, it's not anywhere steep. That's what it looks like on the, on the topo that was reduced in size, so we could put it into an eleven and a half by, by H E. So I think that there was some confusion there, and that was my sense, and I say I did do a very good job when I sensed and heard that confusion of not probably addressing it more directly. I know as we have an uphill battle, I understand that, that when the P and Z makes a negative, uh, you know, recommendation, as they have for me, to get that subdivision, and the council is the one who has to make the decision, but they write, well, I very heavily, at least my experience has been, on their staff recommendations and on the P and Z recommendation and the public hearing in particular. So I think I have worked diligently, believe you me, through the years. And I think yourself and I, and the mayor back in 2008 or '09 met and we talked about this. And to see how we can find a solution to it, I have offered, uh, through, at that point in time, which was like about 2008 or '09, to purchase an additional 33 feet from the, from the Met Store, so we would meet that criteria that the city asks for. We also, they were not interested in selling, I said, and I suggested, well, maybe just an easement, so you will continue to load the only underlying ground, or we'll at least have that easement there. And we really won't change much to the effect of the property at all, they were not interested in that. I offered to do birmingham landscaping and, and, and trees and everything, and it seemed like, their comment was, when we bought this property in 1985, we were told there was only gonna be one home on that 20 acres. And I asked them at the time, I said, is that in your purchase agreement? Because the covenant, when we checked the title work, never stated that there was a covenant out there, that there was only one home could be built on it. Because typically, it's the city who decides what the density is, not, not someone who sells a property. And, uh, as I begin to ask those questions, I never got documentation. I don't know where Michael heard that, but that was his indication that there was only gonna be one home on that 20 acre site. I checked with the people that sold the property, the Barkhofs, and they said, they never represented that at all. They said, that's the city who makes that decision as to what the density is. So that's why I think I got negative response from Michael and his wife, you know, through all the years. I have done everything possible that I could do to satisfy them and ensure that we're gonna be good neighbors going into the future. And as I said, I was completely just caught off guard when they said, geez, you know, we, we're concerned about this, we see vehicles going in and out of there. I can say that sometimes in the summer, maybe I'll get there once every two weeks. And in the winter time, sometimes it's once a month. And that's only to plow the snow and to cut the grass and to make sure it looks good outside, that, that the weeds don't get out a lot. So I'm not exactly sure what their perception was, and I, I really apologize for that, because I, I've not done a very good job. I also left messages twice on their door before I filled the application out and with the Miss Stockman, and left messages on their door, because they weren't home, and said, please call me so we can visit at your convenience, so that we can talk about your objections and hopefully resolve it. I then, got no response. I then went ahead and sent them a letter, and I think I copied the city of the letter that I sent. I hope I did, I think I did. And I never got a response. The first response I got was at the public hearing, and that was a negative, negative response, obviously. So I'm here pleading with hat in hand to say, listen, if you guys are at the council, and there may be some ladies that are not here, if the council decides, no, we're not gonna do it, fine, but I want you to have the facts, that you base your decision based on the facts. So that's, that's all I have to say. And I think Liz, we talked about maybe establishing a 66 foot easement in there, so that the city has total ability to either come in from either way. If, if and when the piece, Nathan's piece develops to the other side, which probably could happen in a year or 20 years, we don't know that yet, but eventually it's gonna probably happen.
Well, that would be a sure way to, for you not to impede any future access, even though the city engineer doesn't feel as though hooking up to Gypsy Valley Road on that curve there is the best solution. And that was talked about a little bit in the report, but, so in that scenario, I guess I believe that really the best thing may be to just limit the number of homes here, basically, by, um, allowing this access. But because of the situation, as far as, if you look at the lot configuration, Ms. Troy is straight north of the Udi property. And she has no interest in splitting or any ability to split. We have a wetland that abuts Gypsy Valley, which would complicate access in that location. And also, the distance from Cleary Road for another intersection, and the fact that it's on a curve would be, would be tough. But if you look at the number of lots that would go that direction, or driveways, rather, it's questionable if Merzendorf could split or not, because his house is kind of right in the middle of the property. If we assume he could have two, and if Udi has two, then you've got five with Ms. Troy, that would be access, direct access to Gypsy Valley. And then everything to the west and north is owned by Johnson's. And then, and that's, you know, they could, if and when they develop, um, could have another local access that way. That wetland on the southern part of Udi's property, you know, extends into the west a bit too, so.
What's property like between Troy's and, and Johnson's house there? The north side of Troy's land?
Uh, I think it's fairly dry. Let's see, I'll look at this. Yeah, there's no wetlands that show up on the national wetlands inventory, uh, along that line there. So yeah, it could go on either side of Nathan's, um, the southern.
Has it ever been proposed, you know, um, I don't know that you, the Merzendorf will ever see fit to do anything in that corner. I mean, years ago, when that was first proposed, when you proposed birmingham and trees and things like that, I think that, that was never seen as a, a resolution in their eyes. Is there any reasonable way, because we don't want it on the corner anyway?
No.
Right.
Is there a way of going between Nathan's house and Ms. Troy's house?
You mean?
Well, I think the existing driveway is not gonna cause a, cause an impediment to any of the traffic things whatsoever. Is that what you're talking about with the driveway?
I'm saying the city wouldn't want, we don't like even the driveways coming out on that corner, it's a bad corner to come out. We certainly wouldn't want an intersection from the city coming out there.
I would not propose an intersection there, but I think that probably what could happen is certainly the access could come from the other way, in which these two lots could have a cul-de-sac, so they all go out eventually the other way. For the time being, it would be, uh, really would be a temporary, uh, access onto Gypsy. As soon as the, the piece to the, to the, uh, I guess the west of us would develop, then that's going to be, I'm sure the city engineer is gonna require and request that we somehow take that easement that we've, that we're willing to dedicate to the city and connect that into their plan, so that they can get us out from that way. And then we can just eliminate the drive to Gypsy.
I think what you were saying was, if he looked into buying some, a strip from Johnson to get out, is that what you were thinking?
Johnson's or trade some land with Troy.
Trade.
You've got the easement going out to Gypsy Valley, and she's concerned about the horses and that wetland on her south end. Is, is there a way of coming in on the, the west end of Troy and coming up between either buying land from Johnson's or from Troy, to come out between Johnson's and Troy?
Well, her house is so close to the, all the lot lines there, she's very.
It's gonna be close on the south or the north, I mean, I don't know which way she faces.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Johnson's would be interested in that or not, but, but what I'm saying is, maybe pull back. I don't know what your urgency is for, for the split, but look at, based on, on what was discussed at the P and Z, maybe coming out a different way. You know, the, the, the one plan that, that was there was some, someday, who knows when, when, when Johnson develops his land, maybe coming up west of his house and coming up on his north property there, between Nathan and Michael. Where we, we'd rather have something in access on, on a straight piece of road. So if there was something to be discussed between Nathan Johnson and Ms. Troy, about putting an access north of her, rather than south where there's an issue, first with the Merzendorfs, and secondly with the, um, corner access, would that be worth having a discussion before we make final decisions?
We could certainly pursue that, but my guess is, is that Nathan, who's farming out, or whoever, I think, you know, whoever the landowner is, in order to, to give us an easement or sell us the property, it's gonna have a negative impact, not only on his farming, but also for his ability in the future to sell it to a developer. Because that driveway, that easement, whether, whether I own the property or he grants an easement, is gonna be part of what he has to sell to develop, or to a developer. So my sense is, he's probably not gonna have an interest in that. Not until they sell his whole piece. Once his whole piece is sold, then the developer has to come to the city with a plan that's going to allow, you know, the access and everything.
Maybe, maybe your approach is to Ms. Troy, and say, you're gonna have this same amount of activity north or south of you. I'll give you land in the south and trade for land to the north of your property.
But are you referring to a street or just a driveway?
Driveway. But, you know, it's gonna be a 66 foot easement.
Well, no, he wouldn't even.
If it's two driveways.
He could buy a strip along the west side of Troy's and on the north side from Johnson. And he'd have ownership out to the street then, and he wouldn't even have to, he wouldn't have to put the driveway in there, but you, you can do that to meet the intent of the ordinance. Or get closer, you'd have ownership out to the, to city street then.
Does this make any sense, Liz? I mean, is it?
Well, my concern.
Worth the discussion?
Well, my concern is that there's no interest for Troy to, to do this, because she has no potential to subdivide, so you're really looking at just Johnson's benefiting from that? Versus, you know, if the road is, the future road is, um, north, further north, then you could get lots along both sides of the street.
But, but is there a way of making, attempting to Troy, to Ms. Troy?
Well, so.
Can, can Mr. Udi give her something that would be valuable to her on his, north end of his properties and trade for land? Maybe he trades, so there's no easement across the, the southeast corner there, and she gets a little land out of it for her horses.
So would you propose then that both, two Udi lots would use that access then? And that this would just be eliminated across?
No, they wouldn't have to.
They wouldn't have to, it just depends on what's valuable to Ms. Troy. If she's, it's what's valuable to Ms. Troy. If, if one of the lots comes out north and one comes south, she might say, I don't want them on both sides of me. I'd assume that southeast corner would be, you know, joined with Merzendorf, you could go both there.
But he wouldn't have to put in a second driveway. If he, if he has ownership out to the city street for both lots, he meets the intent of, and meets the intent of the ordinance.
And, and I'm not, I'm not worried about the intent of the ordinance.
He can continue using that same driveway he has today for both houses.
He could.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if it makes it more appealing to Ms. Troy to say, hey, if they both use this. Now, she might say, if somebody's going up there and somebody's going down here. She might say, I don't want anybody on the south side, if, if you're going to my north, I'd just sort of be quiet down in my south. I'm just saying, give her the option of, he's got the access for one lot no matter what. He can build one house back there and use the access that he has. His request is to go above and beyond without access to the second lot if Merzendorf doesn't agree to something on that corner to widen it out, or Troy or, or Johnson doesn't. So I would say, one option is to pull back and approach the other owners with, here's an option, what do you think?
Well, I think, I think, you know, true, true, Pia Troy has no objection to the driveway or the two lots. Her objection was if we build two houses, she, she needs to maintain proper drainage from, for, you know, from her pound or her horses, which is not an issue. It was Merzendorf who's on the other side that isn't, that doesn't want to see two houses there. And I don't know that there's any, any positive for Pia Troy. And I don't know that there's any, any positive for Pia Troy. Because I've not heard anything from her that she doesn't want two houses, not at all.
No, but you're not going to get without Murtdorf. She can't give you anything on the north side of your, your access.
Well, she could, but, but she probably would cut her property down too small. No, I would say, no, she, she's not going to do that.
No, well, you got a pond right there, so.
Right, there's a pond.
You'd have to go the north side of the pond and that, I'm sure she wouldn't want to come in there.
But then when that goes to her house.
Okay.
Well, it says in the flag lot regulations, "Flag lots shall generally not be permitted except under unique circumstances and through approval of a CUP where practical difficulties can be shown to exist due to natural features, physical constraints, or existing street and lot arrangements." And I guess in my mind, this applies and to, I don't know. I guess I don't see one additional house causing a real traffic issue. And I actually really like the idea of limiting this to a temporary access. And then in the future, Udi could construct this cul-de-sac that hooks up to whatever happens to the west. And then at some point, this is eliminated. Because Troy and Murtdorf both have direct access. I don't know. It's a tough one, yeah, there's no doubt about that.
Yes, they have their own access, separate from what I'm proposing. So, we're not, we're not subjecting them to what we, what we're going to propose. So, that's, that's not an issue. And I think the issue is, is us getting that 33 foot easement, which we can't get from Murtdorf, he's not willing to sell. He can't sell it to us because, first of all, there's a pond there and a wetland. So, that, you know, it's an easement, we'd have an easement, but we certainly couldn't put a driveway in there not without mitigating the wetland issues and all, all those things. And that would decrease the size of her lot to the point that it doesn't make sense for her. So, that's why originally, typically what a city does, you know, and I may be talking out of order here, but my experience has been is that a city takes 33 feet from each side of the property. In other words, each side gives 33, and I told 66 for the easement for the street. And, but she can't really give 33, so I'm willing to give 66. So, all the street, if it is, if it does go there, or cul-de-sac, will be on my property. Not affect hers and not affect Murtdorf.
Hey, you just can't do that until you get by Murtdorf's corner at home.
I can do what?
You can't give 66 feet from your eastern line to Gypsy Valley because the Murtdorf's on that property.
I couldn't for that piece. The city would have to acquire that from Murtdorf. I, I've got a 33 foot easement there, but I don't have a 66. And, and I think what Ms. Stockman said is that the city engineer said, that's probably not the good place for a street to come out to anyway. It's going to have to go the other way, which would be through the other property to the, to the west when that develops.
Yeah, the 66, if he were to dedicate it, would at least not impede future access either way. And like I said at P and Z, it's always easier to vacate a portion of it if we end up not needing it. But it's hard to get it later.
Well, it's going to be a hassle. I'm going to ask them to pay for it. I'm, I'm now giving it to the city and saying, hey, look, because you've done this and you went out of your way to help me, I'm going to give you a 66 for the easement, so you don't have to buy it in the future.
That you're saying is just keep the 33 from Gypsy Valley up to the property line and go to 66?
Yes, yes.
That would allow a cul-de-sac coming from the west if, if that's what, where we end up. And you could certainly add conditions that he needs to hook up to the public street, you know, at a future date.
How, where would you put the cul-de-sac?
Well, you'd have to extend it up to his second lot, which, you know, which would be the eastern half.
So, you would ask for the easement for the width of the cul-de-sac there too then?
You could, yeah, you could dot it in on her.
You could do that, yes.
We could dot it in on them. Because in that scenario, yeah, you need the 75 feet on the cul-de-sac.
And I, I think, I think what that, what that offers is the city the option to go either way. If in the future, they decide they do want to go out to Gypsy Valley, or Gypsy Valley straightens out, or decide to do a circle there rather than a, than a curve, or whatever happens, they've got the option of going out to Gypsy Valley. Yes, they'd have to acquire the 33 feet from, from Murtdorf, that's true. But the other option would be is if the city decides, and this piece to the, to the west of it develops, the city then can say, okay, we already got the 30, the 66 feet and/or the cul-de-sac, you know, wherever that is. And that would have to, it, it at least get into the second parcel, the, the parcel to the east, because that would be the access point. So, the, the bubble probably would be right there. And then the rest of it could just be vacated or left, whatever.
But one thing, I don't think Murtdorf realizes or has thought about how that could help him in the future, because he's probably not interested in splitting right now. But, you know, sometimes it's not thought about until later.
Well, and, and I think realistically, I know it's a ways off with sewer and water out here, but at that point in time, the, you know, the density would be a lot more than adding one house back there. You know, we've got, I think it's like five acres of our plan, so if we could get four units per acre, there's eight home sites here if we had sewer and water available that we could be subdividing. That's not my plan, and I don't think that's anybody's plan into the future.
You're a long way off from that.
That's a long way off, I agree. That's a long, probably not in my lifetime, that's for sure.
Yeah, probably not.
Not we can help it. All right, do we need anything else from the council at this point? Ms. Stockman, anything else you want to say?
Is there, no, I, yep.
We've got a, a negative recommendation or a recommendation not to approve from the P and Z. Anything else we should know that would affect that?
You know, legally speaking, and I know Chair Ames was very concerned about the legal legality of the access easement. That part is fine. You know, the courts look at, is there a reasonable use of this property? Yes, one home can be a reasonable use of this lot. You know, if you should decide that it's not appropriate or that they don't meet the terms of the ordinance. But, you know, at the same time, I think the property owner's gone above and beyond and is willing to cooperate to the, the extent that he can. So, but it's a, yeah, it's a tough one.
It, it really doesn't meet the ordinance at this point in time though. And if land to the north and the west gets split, it'd probably be something in the future be eligible to be split at that point in time. Now, I'm sure why some of your neighbors feel that there was only going to be one house back here, and that's probably because the 20, by the ordinance, the 20 should not be able to be split. And that's why they assumed that there was going to be one house back.
I would imagine that is correct. Nobody has ever told them that, but I'm, I'm assuming that that's what the ordinance says because you don't have access to both, which would take 66 feet. There, there can only be one home on that 20 acre lot.
And because of that, I'm sure when you bought the 20 acres, you probably got a pretty good deal on it because it was really.
I wasn't even aware of that, no. I was, I wish that was the case, but no. I, in fact, when I bought it, it was at the top of the market. I did not get a pretty good deal on it.
Well, I mean, in one respect, I, I know what you're saying as far as it not meeting the ordinance because it doesn't have 66, you know, feet. It's not fronting on a public road. But at the same time, he's, he's not creating this ac, or asking for this access easement, it's there. And yeah, you have the right to just say that it is a reasonable use the way it is. But there are definitely physical hardships too, so it's a really tough call. I, I guess I kind of believe that even when this land of the west develops, I mean, I think he's going to be sitting there with two lots still. I don't, I don't think it's going to make a heck of a lot of difference. Because of that, Pia Troy being straight north and her not having any subdivision potential, you know, it kind of creates a, a landlocked deal there. Which was, you know, the whole problem from the get-go. So, it's tough.
And I, you know, once again, I would invite either one of the council to sit over there and walk the site and take a look at it. I'm sure there would be anyone out there, so you take a look and see what we're talking about. And I know it's a tough, it's a tough thing because, you know, it's, it does not meet the ordinance that the city has in place. Each lot has to have street foliage or 33 foot easement to it. We know that now, there's no question about that, there's no question. But I think what we're looking at here is that there is the ability to do the lots, but it's still within, you know, within, with a conditional use permit, and it's a temporary access. So, you have two houses on that, on that 20 acres, using that one driveway for that 33 feet over Murtdorf, whichever that easement is, you know, it's 100 feet, 150 feet, whatever the easement is, for a temporary time, not a permanent thing. As soon as the piece to the, to the west of myself would develop, then we could then go out that way. So, it's a temporary thing.
All right, anything else from the council?
Thank you. Appreciate the time and the consideration, thank you.
Do we actually have the recommendation for the appointment? Is that in the packet?
Oh, yeah, it is. You guys didn't get it either? Oh, you did get it.
Yeah, it was in the packet. It was in mine anyway.
I didn't get it.
Or maybe I put it in there.
I don't remember seeing it, I went through the packet. The recommendation was for, to approve Jason Alders to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. You were at the meeting, maybe you apparently got it.
I only have Al's application, I don't have.
Oh, you have the application.
You have the application.
I have the application, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the application was in the P and Z packet. It would have been.
We don't have the recommendation, but the.
After P and Z.
The vote was taken to approve Jason Alders.
We now have two openings under, right?
We, we since then have had a resignation, yes.
So, we could look at the planning, both applicants if we wanted to.
Not really. Mr. Vile is withdrawn from all city functions.
Really?
Yeah, he has resignation today. Watershed, Roden Bridge, Park and Rec, and this. Don't know what's going on, Cory said she'd talk to me tomorrow.
Ah. Wow.
So, no. So, we will be posting again for a new opening. The grant, the recommendation was approved from them to go to Gypsy.
Yeah, I think he'll be a good addition to the group.
So, yes, we'll have a bunch of openings. Serving on everything, but serving on nothing, so I'm not exactly sure what's going on. Cory said she'd try and get some more information for us, so. All right, the code enforcement, starting with the revised letter. I appreciate the, the words, the word changes, modification there.
Oh, I hope I brought it. Cory didn't put it in here, let me see.
It's, it's in there, but it's out of order.
Oh, is it? Okay, let me look.
Yeah. This isn't mine, you got it?
Oh, yeah, I see it, okay. Thank you.
I think, I, I appreciate the modifications that you made. I do think we need to look at the ordinance if we're going to make this change. We need to make sure that we're complying with the ordinance the way it's written. Do you happen to know?
No, we're not, so we would have to change it because to be an official administrative notice, we have to not only list what the suspected or known violations are, we have to also put in what the potential fines are. And if that's the part that you feel is threatening, and, you know, that you didn't want in the letter, then we'll have to name it something else and add that as the first step in the process. And I guess, I mean, a lot of times the letter is the first contact because we, A, don't know a phone number, you know, so unless you go to the door and try to catch somebody.